To look at those pictures that I had brought to Andy. For you guys to take a look at if you have any questions. But all we're asking is for a lease, possibly a 10-year lease for so much, for them to be able to put a couple of storage buildings or a dog in, nothing permanent, because it would still belong to the city. And to be able to just let them have access for use of that. Because when you go back, there's a tree line and it drops off down into all the creek and the wet area down from the children's, I mean, the child development center.
They would keep it mowed if they did?
They would maintain the property, absolutely. Because it's up on a hill and the city workers wouldn't even have to come up the hill anymore. They'd just take care of all that. It was right below.
So we don't have to mow it?
Red, is it to one lot or is it?
Yes, it's just one little lot. Let me, I didn't know what Andy.
Is it ready to this one? Second one up?
Yeah, the second one up right there.
At half, how large is that?
It's 32 by, 32 feet wide by 72. The strip that I'm asking you guys to lease to these folks. A possible, possible lease, Mr. White, possible lease. And I know Andy wasn't sure of the legalities and we knew that you wouldn't want to sell, but we would like to at least consider a possible lease on it to these folks. They are 78 and 82 years, 83 years old, excuse me, and are moving into town to find a little closer into town.
Red, where is that up in the corner of that property? Up here?
Right there. All of that, behind all those houses is Child Development Center, the park and all that down there. But on the very corner.
Do they look like a building or a shed?
I don't know. That's city property you've got right there. That's for you to find out. I don't know.
City property. Tell them, you know what, no.
I did the one there.
That one in there? That corner up there. Like a shed or something.
Red, I didn't look at all the buildings around it. Actually, I think there's some, probably some encroachment from other places. But as a real estate agent, I'm not going to let someone buy something and encroach on city property with my knowledge of it.
I was, I thought he was talking about one block down. I'm not familiar with that one. Know what's on it. They'll maintain it now.
They part out.
I hope this you guys maintain it. The lot I'm talking about is white.
They must maintain it now.
Behind that house because they're selling.
Which one is it?
Second one up.
Second one up.
One works this street.
That looks like a little building too.
Yeah, okay, whoever. They say they mow it because the lady that is selling the property has actually moved out, but she said there's a, I mean, there's a rebared stake there. And she said the city maintains up to that, and I'm not exaggerating. It's as close as, closer than you're going on.
Yeah, there's stories. We've been, as long as I can remember, we've always kind of mowed that because it runs parallel to Hockin Spring.
Yeah.
Up through there. And I know the little stake you're talking about.
So, I mean, that 32 by 72 strip, they would maintain just to put movable building or fence on.
Well, does that move the line all the way back to the drop-off of blood or something?
Yes, it would go to the tree line. If it doesn't drop off, it just would go in, you know, to the tree line and immediately drops off.
What would we do about mowing the rest of that through there?
Well, I, I mean, I would say, well, it's easy access to get to. I mean, I wouldn't make me any trouble.
Red, the way that property is lined out, the fence line's here and you come down, and from what I measured, that 32 to 72 would come up to the, to the tree line and then go up. And the people would maintain, the city workers wouldn't even have to get on that property. They'd just come up.
Right on up beyond that.
I have no idea. That's, that doesn't have anything to do with this little piece of strip. Because it's just directly behind the house. That's up to Mike and whomever, Greg, Red Department, whomever. But are you wanting to move the fence line? No, all I'm wanting is use of that property land. It's a possible lease to that 32 by 72 strip of property that's directly behind the house that would stay right in the fence line that's already there from the neighbors, for them to be able to put a storage building and a dog pen on. And, but lease it so it's all legal and they would maintain the property. And, you know, we'd like a number of your lease for whatever amount you guys would come up with. I do not want them to put. I'm sorry? Yes, or lease to those, to the people buying the property.
I don't know when to make the decision on that right now, but I would suggest that somebody go out, I'll go out and look at it and make sure that, you know, I don't see a problem.
I would be delighted to take you up there, go with anybody, or you can go on your own. Just let me know and try to answer any more questions you have. Really a very simple layout, got to do with one, you'll have to do with all.
Mike? These buildings that are shown on here, do you know, I mean, who uses them? You do, you would, have you looked at this picture?
Well, I, well, I've looked at the picture. Basically, they're, they're little buildings that's been there for years. They're, we've always kind of, to kind of maintain that area in there, but it's just, even when I took it over, we just kind of mowed up to that, one of those buildings.
But they're not our buildings.
They're not our buildings, no.
Well, the city can't lose by adverse possession, but it looks to me like you've got some other property that's being used on a regular basis. Is that property of any use?
No, it's sloped and, you know, some of it has to be trimmed by hand. You can't actually get down, get down into it with mowers.
Rocky, the strip I'm talking about actually goes to the tree line and there's nothing on it now.
Hide your weight.
Whoa, looking at it, we've got folks that clearly have encroachment, it looks like at the top. There you got somebody that may on two lots or there's a house in an empty lot. Looks like at least part of that roof hangs over into the city property and there's some property behind it. It might be a good time to clean some of that up.
Well, that, we just didn't want to do what we thought that we had seen others do, so that's why we came to you for permission to do that.
And by clean it up, I mean, unless the city's got some use to it, declare it surplus and add it on a little lot. Well, we can't vacate it. We got to declare it surplus, but I doubt it's got any fair market value on its own. It might be valuable if folks in front, you could sell it for something.
I would request that if you guys can address that, I would like to know, because we have a contract on these folks' property and I either need to, and they're not going to use the property without permission. So I either need to pursue another piece of property to put them in or to try to move this forward so we can do something. There, I would love to know by the end of this week if I possibly could.
Mike, you're going to have to come back and have city action. We're going to have to clear it surplus and then get rid of it. However we do, it's not going to happen anyway.
Okay, what?
Maybe two weeks from today.
All right. And like I said, what we were asking for is just a lease for so much a year, whatever you guys come up with.
The lease that you have to declare it surplus.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. So I can maybe say in two weeks, then I can, we can.
Should be able to have it at one place in two weeks, but need to take a look at what you're going to do with all of that stuff.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody, any of the department heads have any, anything?
I've got a couple of things. Lately, there's been a lot of talk about the GPS being wrong, sending people in the wrong direction and all that. My wife and I found last night, if you go to gps.gov, they got a whole list of what to send in to get that changed. And the way it sounds, the more people that send it in, the better you are to get changed. If y'all get on there and say 14th Street ends and that would say police, fire, that's a lot of problems. Truck going up 14th Street to that end. But I got on it today and went in and put that it was closed in that one corner. So if we get enough of those, they'll change on the GPS, or so they're saying. GPS.gov. Well, .gov. One of the things, there are a couple of things. On the sewer rehab, the contractor don't want to come back. It's going to cost them a lot of money. They got $35 a foot for what they're planning on doing. They told us we could take their money and buy piping, which would be $5 a foot so we can use, we'd get five times as much piping in, so they're going to allow us to do that. The only thing is it's going to extend it on another, about another two, three weeks, but we'll have a lot more new pipe than what we intended to have originally. And then on the, are dozer, I put on the paperwork, it's broke down. We got it back to where we could sell it now. If there, we got any projects coming up, like the tennis courts at the, I'm not sure what their timeframe is for the high school. And then the Eccles Drive, if we're going to do that project, we probably need to look at least a home for a dozer if that's acceptable by everybody. But we've got some time to look at it. But I think if we're planning on doing those projects, that would be our best route.
And we were talking about all the tennis courts, money revenue, then like you said, that one.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we need a dozer to do that because of the way that it's got feel in it. But if, if they're not in, I'd be worried about it. Mr. Cunningham called today, but I haven't talked to him yet. And that's all I have.
I noticed Christmas tree in the park's got some brown on it. We started back the watering.
Yeah, it's always been watered. It's just. And about 20% of the fine family in DeKalb County died. The drought shouldn't have affected that one because it's been watered all year, but there's something happening.
Green Bay Road up around Fisher was one we were talking about the other day. Not really mad as he thought it would happen, but he could change.
Well, that we did and he puts, he breaks all his leaves into it, so he stops at the ditch and we told him not to, but it still happens. So he's created that problem for us. But we have a lot of that.
Greg?
In the process of trying to get the two swimming pools ready, we pulled the covers off and started, the treatment of the water will drain and high-pressure wash, the big city pool will probably start next week. We did hit the chiller set yesterday at the rec center. Appreciate all the cooperation from everyone. So hopefully, we're going to have air conditioning make it to the rec center starting tomorrow. They're plumbing it all in and getting the electrical stuff worked out. We do have the Kiwanis Club, Optimist Club, special needs playground dedication this weekend. I know that both are planning on being there and to have the ribbon cutting. And actually, Tim was the president and the ribbon cutting will be at 10 and the radio remote will start at 9. We did not get to open the splash pad yesterday. We're still finishing up the Tiki Hut Garden, the attendant shack. And we had some construction materials on deck that we should open it today and have everything ready to go for Saturday. Over and out. That's the business. I want to see if there's any questions.
Any other departments?
I will call your attention to the post amendments to the zoning ordinance that I put in Eastern Box this morning. Hopefully, we had a chance to kind of reopen those and see what we're trying to do. And I would like to get permission to put this in the newspaper so that they can publish the changes and, and have the public, any public input that might be.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
We need to look, Jimmy, at the possible addition of that area we talked about yesterday before we actually take action on that, increase in the overlay.
That's, that's up to you guys.
Okay. What we talked about, you remember the overlay that went from that basin gap to the south end of town and from, I think, Lincoln Avenue up to Forest Avenue? What we discovered in the last week or so is that there's quite a bit of property from Forest Avenue up on the side of the ridge that would ideally be suited for some of these garden homes and smaller houses. So we might want to look at increasing that overlay up the side of the ridge before we actually adopt that.
Of course, planning commission just recommends that y'all can change in any way, in any way you choose.
Right now, as it sits, we can add, can't we?
Yes. If you want to change the overlay to expand up to the ridge, we can name a street up there at the top of the ridge if you wish and say it's going along that particular line.
But there's property that's not in that.
Anybody that's not in this particular overlay can still come before the VCA at any time, it's on board of adjustments. And request their property be looked at as potentially one of these smaller developers.
Okay.
There is a thing for that, but that can still come before.
I think if they do that, they'd have to pay like a hundred dollar fee each time, wouldn't it?
I agree with you up the ridge.
Yeah, we incorporated this.
Small, small.
It would save that. Yeah, there's, a lot of those lots were laid out in 50-foot increments up through there back in the 50s and 40s when all that subdivisions were added. Everybody that put in 10 more houses got a subdivision named after them. And they, they went as narrow as they could. And I grew up on a 40-foot lot. But it sure was deep. Yeah. Yeah, I'm a deep thinker.
Free up like that.
Right. And that's the beauty. The planning commission did a good job of bringing this to us, but we can, we can add to their recommendations. And I think they were a little hesitant to just do the whole thing there because of the slope up there, but I think it'd be best interest to incorporate it into the ordinance when we do it. Then the rules next meeting and do that if we need to. I've had some builders tell me they're kind of excited about the potential of coming down here and building some smaller homes and see what the market would bear. And I think the market's there, isn't it, Rita?
Yes.
I, I'm kind of excited downtown, they come back with these smaller, newer homes.
Jimmy, how about the house over on Rucker, the Rucker Street that?
Just passed off a piece of material we could go to y'all today. And after that's presented, I have it signed back to my office, then we'll request utilities for this, this town. Should be by the end of the week.
I've been approached by two or three people concerning basketball goals. And I know we talked about doing something down at Spring Grove. I don't know whether we really stand on that from a monetary standpoint. But most of the folks that I've talked to is wanting something back at City Park, even if it's just one goal that some of the kids could, could play while they were at their Saturday or, you know, some of the other events going on. Just wondering what everybody thought about it. Doesn't have to be anything fancy. In fact, I wouldn't even change the lights or anything.
Why would it take it down?
It'd have been down for longer.
Most trouble would.
Originally tennis court.
They were tennis courts.
Basketball goals on either side. That's a multi-purpose facility that turned into a multi-purpose hangar. It's been years taken down. It's a problem.
I've been, I've been that.
Flag, like, like that.
Oh, is that a certain time, right? Or no?
If you don't have any lights, well, that's what.
Yeah.
I think it is worth looking into and giving that option down there. All right, looks like it's 12 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with our council meeting. I've asked School Resource Officer Matt Wilson to come and open this up in prayer, so Matt, if you would come?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, this gathering. God, we all need your wisdom, no matter what position we hold. So Father, we ask you today, Lord, that these leaders, God, that they would listen to you and your Holy Spirit, Father. And God should help us all to complete our goal in life and our purpose. In Jesus' name, amen.
Place flag, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Good to see this good number out. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last?
Motion to approve.
Hey, we got a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
We already had a motion, so.
Okay, Johnny's second.
Johnny's second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2017-24 declaring certain Recreation Department air conditioner items as surplus.
Greg mentioned this a moment ago. He had the chiller replaced that we've talked about for a couple of years now. Scrap value of that thing is approximately $700 to $800. He had an offer from a company called Industrial Solutions to purchase it for $2,200.
Good job.
I'm making motion to declare it surplus.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is Resolution 2017-25 authorizing an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to make improvements and extensions to Eccles Drive.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Now, this, how much is the state? Are they going to pay for all the upgrade on that or how much? They put a dollar figure on it or?
Oh, but the engineering, I was calling, the engineering.
The state is going to do everything with the engineering. Do you get a second?
Yeah, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, Resolution 2017-26, accepting low bid for the landfill scraper pan repair.
Bid, we sent out bids April 19th. They were due in yesterday. Sent out three bids, only got one response. That one response was from Thompson Tractor Company for $16,470.
My understanding that, that we award the bid today, that it should be repaired within 30 days. I'll make a motion, second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in, any, any, all in favor, say aye. My tongue tied up here. Anybody else too? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right. Resolution 2017-27, accepting low bid for the plant mix and binder.
Again, bids were mailed out on April 19th, due in yesterday. Three bids, sent out, only one response. That response was from Wired Grass. $55.95 per ton for binder, $59.95 for plant mix. That's 70 cents a ton greater than last year.
What was the binder?
$55.95.
And that's all 70?
Yeah, both of them were 70 cents more per ton this year than last year.
Is that about to go in price, Tim?
Sir?
Is that about Craig price?
Yeah, it was 62 four years ago. It's been coming down since then.
I think it's down because of fuel prices, but I think that's our best bet as far as hauling and everything. I'm making motion to accept this bid.
Second. We haul it, but they.
Yeah, but it's closer also.
Oh, yeah.
It's only bid and they're pretty close.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Got a motion to accept and a second?
There's nothing about this bid that requires us to buy it there if he finds a better price. They just agreed to be bound to Senate.
Bound by the price.
Right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. A new business, discuss about replacing the air conditioning unit at the senior center building.
I was approached oh, about a month ago by Craig Sheldon from the DeKalb County Commission's office. We have an agreement with the county. We own the senior building, but they maintain it. And there was some ambiguity in the language of the contract. Rocky and I looked at it about what entails upkeep and maintenance. Craig said it's beyond maintenance, that it needed to be replaced. And he brought a quote from Bryant's Heating and Cooling, which I included in your packet. Rocky's looked at it and we're of the opinion, we don't even have a contract with them. It's expired in '09, I believe, wasn't it, Rocky?
Somewhere around that time, yes. But at this point, it's just, it's sort of, my law renews once a year because we keep accepting the dollar if they actually send it. And they keep maintaining it.
Utilities are paid by who?
Them.
They're paying utilities?
Well, what our out-of-pocket cost is on that building is carried on our insurance roll.
I know what that roughly costs.
I broke it out. Have to go into the policy and break out that individual piece, but.
Basically, we don't, as I understand it, we don't use the building at all with the exception of holding city elections there.
And how much is the, the, six?
He's got a quote in here from Bryant's for two, for two different, you know, she's got a Lennox and a Dicke. Both of them $86.95, but I'm sure if we're going to replace the air conditioner, we'll want to get our own quote.
I see no reason, since we don't use it, I see no reason why we need it. I don't, I think we ought to just give it to the county and let them do what they want to do.
How did the city come about owning that building?
I don't know. It, it predates me and there's not much in this world that does. But, but it does. And.
Freeway joint venture?
City built it.
Start with, city built.
I think, yeah, the city built it and we, we had some use of it and then the senior city was there and whatever use we had, basically, I don't have any clue what it was, but. The building is built on the city property up there. But, I mean, if you, if that's what the council wanted to do, all you'd, of course, they'd have to agree to accept it. But we could easily give it to them with some provision that we retain the right to hold city elections there and.
If we give it to, if we give it to them, can they then change the use of it though?
Give it to them, it's there. But, you know, I don't know what else they'd use it for.
So everything presently in there now is county operation?
That's, we, we don't do anything in it.
So carry tax, so?
Well, we're exempt from taxes primarily. Paying, we pay the insurance and then now this has arisen as to whether this is maintenance and repair. And I, and I'll be honest with you, it's sort of in a gray area. I mean, you know, I think if the roof blew off, that would pretty be, pretty obvious that was a little past maintenance and repair. But there's some question about whether we're, we're obligated to spend this $8,000 or not, or whether they're obligated to. And if you just gave it to them, reserved the right, then that wouldn't be an issue anymore. There may be some negatives to it, I guess, but you wouldn't want to do anything but give them the footprint of the building and probably the parking area up there. And I'm sure we probably maintain the parking area too, Tim?
Yeah.
And we probably, do we mow it and all that stuff?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Just the business portion. Yeah, the park portion. Is the hair completely out or they just want to need?
I don't know, Johnny. He, the city, he had repaired it over and over.
I think it's 23 years old.
Well, surely they got more than one unit in there. That's three.
There's three units. I think he said there's three units in that entire building, but this particular one is for the upstairs.
So they have been paying to have it, the unit repaired? Well, I guess they need to have it replaced then too, wouldn't you think?
Well, the wording in that contract is they're responsible for the upkeep and maintenance and that's what Rocky's saying, the gray area is.
Well, actually, as we look at the contract, I don't have it in front of me right now. I think Andy and I both thought that if you looked at that contract, that neither one of us was our first reaction. This is their job. This is their job. I think both of us, don't you agree with that, Andy? That this would fall into something that we should do under the contract, which the contract's not binding anymore. But the question then became, why, why do we need the building at all if we're not using it at all? And because if there's repairs starting to happen, they're gonna continue to happen.
Shows an asset on our books and.
Yes.
How much is it valued at? That's a pretty good sized building, but.
It's a good building.
My only concern would be is what if they come in here two years later and totally change the use of the building and we have no control? That's my only reservation about that, and I don't think it'd be anything detrimental before paying, but I just, you know, it's been used for pretty much same thing for several years.
Well, everything in it's county operation. They have to put it somewhere. I mean, it's either that or just cancel all of them entirely, and I don't think.
Didn't they move the thing from up here at the base gap down there?
I don't think they have any lunches up at the other place anymore.
They moved it.
They moved the nutrition thing down there and put the clover closet there.
They had a, some kind of indigent type agency in the basement. They just swapped.
Casa or something?
Yeah.
And they flip-flopped them on base gap part of us.
Alson, just given the county a building, I'd recommend, and I think Rocky would agree, that contract be redone.
I think that's the least we gotta do is restructure the contract, and like I say, they got three units. So here's one. When's the next, and then the next is gonna come up?
Might have a little more study on it.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I think the only push, I think we've got plenty of time on some sort of agreement. I think the only push at this point is.
It's getting warm weather.
It's getting, it's fixing to get hot. And let me speak from personal experience. Old folks don't like heat.
Well, if, if we're, and I don't doubt that these are good quotes, but I think we would need to be diligent. If we're gonna have to buy units, we need.
We need to get it all.
We need three bids submitted, and, and these are basically good quotes, but if we're gonna have to pay for it, I think we gotta bid it out. That right lawyer?
No, you don't have to bid it out.
No, you don't have to bid it out, but I would, I would think that we would want to, to get our own quotes. I, I, I think the initial question you wanna answer is, are we gonna replace that unit and then go negotiate with them? Are we gonna take the position? And then, I think you can do either one you want to, but if, if we're, if we make to take the position that we're going to replace that unit, then I think it's incumbent upon us to decide who to use and what's the fair price, et cetera.
I'd like to have the other two checked, see what their prognosis is too. I mean, if we're looking at a year or two down the road, another one, and, or, you know, are they all the same age? Because if they are, we know they're all gonna wear out about the same time, so.
Well, we could go ahead and do this one and redo the contract and spell out what's gonna happen the next time this comes up, because you know if they got three, the other two is gonna be shortly behind.
Right.
And there may be some other things in there too that, that the contract. I think we could be on a good faith standpoint, and I think we can get it cheaper than this price that, that we've got. Be fairly confident about that.
Well, I mean, if the contract's not been renegotiated, you know, I think now's time to do that.
Well, if, if y'all want me to, I'll go ahead and redraft and make some changes to that contract, and then maybe by the next meeting, we could present something to them. And y'all could think about whether or not you wanna go ahead and, or maybe we go ahead and get some prices and then decide whether or not to replace it, and if you're gonna replace it, then say, we're gonna replace it, but here's the next contract that we need to enter into.
I think we get prices on this one and a good check on the other two, see if there's other, any other maintenance issues over pending. And then that gives us a little bit of.
Well, my plan on redoing it was to make it where it's pretty darn clear that it didn't matter.
Right. So worst-case scenario, we'd replace this unit, and then they'd have to replace anything other if we redo this contract, right? Or we give them the building and.
What it costs to fix the air conditioner?
What does a normal commercial lease include when, when you're talking about air conditioning and heat?
Usually, major things such as the heating and air, the roof and the walls are maintained by the lessor. And then the lessy maintains the interior, and, I mean, that's not a hard and fast rule. There's a lot of different associations that go on with that, but generally speaking, major, major structural items are maintained by the landlord, and the interior and things of that nature are maintained by the tenant.
All right, we'll get prices and you work on the contract, and then we'll decide something by next council meeting.
Got it, next two weeks. All right, got activities permit? Daughters of the American Revolution Patriotic Concert at the Rotary Pavilion on Friday, June 30th, from 5 until 9 p.m. Randy, you okay with that? Okay?
Go move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, that gets all of our agenda items. Mayor, you got anything?
Couple of things. Veterans Day Parade, we finally settled on a date and time that the military band can be here. We're hoping that we can get a flyover from some of the military, so we've set it for Friday at 4 p.m. Had conflicts with the VFW and the, and the Marines on Saturday, so this looks like our best.
What is that date, Mayor?
It's November the 10th.
November 10th.
November 10th. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Rocky and I talked about it a good bit, before I leave this place, there's two things that I'd like to get done, if at all possible. And one of them is to get rid of that MAPCO station. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm tired of waiting on them. I checked the tax records as to what they were appraised for. I talked to a local appraiser to give me the, what he considered the value of it to be, based on property that he had bought recently. And it appears that our price that we give them is a above-market price. I would like to have the okay to go ahead and get a certified appraiser, an out-of-town appraiser, to come in and appraise that property, to see if it's feasible to go through condemnation process. Rocky can tell us how much, what that amounts to, but.
Well, one of the first things you're required to do if you decide to condemn property is, is to present the landowner with an appraisal. And there are people that pretty much specialize in those kinds of appraisals. And I would, that, getting the appraisal does not obligate you to condemn the property. It doesn't obligate you to do anything. You're gonna spend probably $2,500 to $3,000 getting the appraisal. But I would recommend that you could, if, if that's a thought that you wanna have is that start the process, get the property appraised, and then notify them that that's being considered. And may have one of two effects. It either may, we may decide we're gonna condemn it, or they may decide that they wanna get off their rear and get the deal that we already made done. Although they never did reduce that deal to writing, so we don't have anything enforceable at this point in time. But I, that would just be a first step. And then, I guess, the only other thing would declare portions around it Mexico and just build us a wall around it.
Let them pay for it.
Well, I, I was under the impression that we had a verbal agreement.
We had a verbal agreement, but a verbal agreement on.
I, I understand.
On land isn't enforceable. We do. We have one, and we have drafts, and we've seen it back three or four times with changes that we wanted in the drafts. And then, at some point during that process, the ownership of MAPCO changed.
Changed.
And, and the people that we were dealing with have been deported or disappeared or something. And they're gone.
Are gone and hiding.
They're in hiding, yeah, whatever.
Regardless, can we not open a dialogue with the people that?
We've been trying. We have been trying for, what, since January, to find somebody down there that'll talk to us. We've asked Jimmy Roach, who put us in with the people and was involved in the sale. We've asked him initially, and then he was involved with the sale between the businesses, as I understand it. We've asked him to talk to the people he knows there and get us someone to talk to. And, and the only response we've ever had, incorrectly from wrong Tamara, is basically, we might get around to it at some point, but at this point, we're too busy doing the other things it takes to, to put this overall deal together. So we have tried very hard to talk to them, and have to open up some dialogue with them, but we just can't get anybody to talk to us.
I think the first thing was said was wait till after the first year, I believe, and then it.
They wanted to wait until the closing of the deal and then reevaluate, and then we checked back with them once we got notification that it had been, that the deal had been closed, and then they wanted to wait some more. And then we've checked back with them again, gotten a new contact, and have reached out to that person who has responded, but again, responded with, well, I need to get with the folks at the new company and let you know them. So it's been a lot of us reaching out to them and them putting us on.
Well, I would like to see us at very least put a little pressure on it.
But it's condemnation, is, have you, do we need to take right now, or do we need to let Tamara go ahead with what?
Well, we're, we're not taking it right now. What, what I'm suggesting is, is if everybody's committed to, to get rid of, getting rid of that ISO that's down there next to the park, that you go ahead and you're not beginning the process of condemnation. What you're doing is doing what you would have to do, and it also gives you a pretty good idea. I mean, let's, if, if you're looking at what the mayor's been told by a realtor here in town and what the tax assessor shows, of course, that's usually low for commercial property. It may be that you can condemn it and get it for less money. And, but you're not committing to do anything. And then, I think when you, when they understand that we're gonna make, that we're gonna continue down this path with or without their cooperation, then you have the opportunity. It may, they may deem it more beneficial to reopen this conversation than they are at this point. Because at this point, they, they just truly, they just don't wanna mess with us at this point. It's just not important to them. And so, I, that, my suggestion is that you authorize the employment of the appraisers, see what it's worth, and then at that point, hopefully, they'll, even seeing the newspaper article, get their attention and we'll start having some dialogue with them again.
And two, you don't know what they really got on their mind, but I know when we first started talking with them, they were trying to find a, someone that would buy that station, that would continue to buy fuel from them. That's when we got involved in it, because we knew if it changed hands, it'd just make it that much harder to handle, so.
Missed the motion and second, Mr. Mayor.
My seconded.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the one other thing that I'd like to get.
You're on the roll.
And I don't know whether I will or not, but it's, it's the old hospital. And we are, we're still working with ADM and EPA. ADM is in the process of doing the second phase. EPA has to take the things that they find in the second phase and run them through their lab and do lab work and all this stuff. So it's a long, drawn-out process. But hopefully, if you can obtain cooperation between ADM, EPA, and HUD, which right now is kinda backing it, we stand a good chance of getting it done. It may be three or four years down the road. I'd love to get that at least started before I leave.
We gonna spray that or anything? It's looking pretty ragged right now.
We sprayed it one time. We need to do it again again now.
We haven't sprayed it.
Yeah, it needs it. At, at what point are we gonna have to fence that, Mayor?
When, when EPA agrees that it's a brownfield site and agrees to start sharing the expense, they won't. They'll tell us verbally what they're gonna do, but they won't actually do anything until it becomes our property. And once it becomes our property, we're gonna have to fence it. I mean, I don't see any way around it.
We do that. I'd like to get us coordinated with Parks and Rec and everybody else. Let's buy a fence, put around that that we can take down and use somewhere else, 'cause I don't see us buying stuff twice. And we're gonna fence it when they do it good and get some stuff that we can use somewhere else, like the soccer fields that need replacing or some of those other places.
Is there any indication on how long it will take for that phase two to get started, or?
Now, it's starting, but it'll be the end of the year before it's done. And a lot of that depends on EPA. I mean, ADM will be finished before the, but with EPA, they will get through with their part. We don't know.
One we don't wanna condemn without the government helping, 'cause we can't afford to clean that thing up without federal help.
It's too much to take that thing.
Right.
I will say this.
It's gonna make a nice lot one of these days that can be developed or something, right, right there in the middle of town.
Anything else, Mayor? All right, again, I'd like to say, appreciate everybody coming out today. Anybody in the audience, I'd like to address the council.
I'd recognize Mr. Mike Shari back there.
Yeah, I started to say, it's good to have our new improvement authority director.
You got a speech? No speeches today.
Next time.
Only one appropriate. All the power's on, bro. Lives are burning pretty good.
I would also like to say, it's good to see three, I know there's three Leadership de Cab students here today. This is part of their curriculum. Actually, four. We have Bradley here every, every council meeting. But this is part of the Leadership de Cab, and Mari's here. That's five, so. If I keep looking, we might have, have more. But that's part of the leadership requirement to, to attend a, some type of a city function, council meeting. If you know anybody that would like to go through Leadership de Cab, applications are being accepted till June 1st, so. Anybody in the audience wanna address us? Not?
Before we adjourn, I'd like to say, I appreciate the nearly ten long years of service we got out of Tim Harris. He's leaving us this week, and I wish him luck in his new job as the Main Street Director. So Tim's done a great job for us. He's a city employee, and he's as dedicated to his new job as he was the old in Main Street. Probably takes a takeoff.
Yeah, I think Main Street will see some leaps and bounds.
No further bids. I'd like to most adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.